April 22, 2021. Would you call the roll, please, Carrie?
Ms. Capazoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arnie?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
And Mr. Chow?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on this second day of April 2021. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, and such notice was transmitted to the Princeton Pack at Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and to ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise their hands using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which the hands are raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be immediately muted. The raised hand feature is not the same as the thumbs up icon or the applause icon. All right, the first item on the agenda, assuming that we do not have any announcements, is PCH Development Corporation. This is the preliminary final major site plan, Bun Drive, Block 4401, Lot 12, file number P202899P. And with that, I think, Jerry, were you going to do something about the discussion on this? Or?
Well, I could just very, very briefly go over what that was about. Obviously, that was a pretty recent decision that we made. They had applied for major site plan review, two variances, and a waiver so they could construct a 25-unit apartment building at PCV, all affordable units. The variances were pretty minor. They related to the size of the bedrooms were slightly smaller than required by code, and the size of the units were slightly smaller than required by code. The board granted the site plan approval of the two variances. There was a waiver for the size of the plan, and that is a real thumbnail sketch of what this is all about. I know that PCH was interested in getting this approved by the end of the month because they needed it in order to apply for, I guess it's HMFA funding time? Tom, you're muted.
Yes, Jerry.
Yeah, okay. So basically, that's what it is.
All right. And are we taking comments on that? Or anyone?
This is Louise. I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to move it.
I will second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Otherwise?
One to please, before the vote takes place. I was not at this meeting. I did watch the meeting on the video afterwards, so I'm not sure if I will be voting on this or not.
No, Owen, you will not be included.
Okay.
Anyone else have any question?
Carrie, I was not at the meeting either.
That's correct. There are several members not attending. So would you like me to do a voice, a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to leave the meeting now. You know, I think we've always talked about 11 o'clock as a stop time. I think 7:37 is a good stop time, just something for you to consider.
Thank you for the reminder of the stop times.
Okay, have a good meeting. Take care.
Bye, Jerry.
Bye-bye. Right, bye.
The fourth item on this is a discussion item, and it's where area in need of redevelopment. So who had opted to leave this discussion? Was it?
Madam Chair, I can give a brief introduction.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
May I just break in first? I'm so sorry to interrupt. This is Louise. I am in a very remote location, and sometimes my internet connection gets unstable. So if you see my picture disappear in my name there, it's not that I have left. I promise I am right here and focused on the screen, but you might have noticed last week there was a lot of in and out of my video, and that's what that's about. So sorry to interrupt with that, but I just wanted to offer an explanation.
A special hand signal that we should notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. All right, this is the discussion of the area in need of redevelopment, and the subject is the Planning Board's preliminary investigation to determine whether the North Harrison Study Area, which consists of the Princeton Shopping Center, which is a vacant parcel located between PSC and Terhune Avenue, Grover Park, and the three properties at the southeast corner of North Harrison Street and Clearview meet the statutory requirements for designation as an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation. So with that, I think. Michael?
Well, you took the words right out of my mouth, Madam Chair. So I thought what I do is I'll introduce both our redevelopment counsel, Mr. Frank Regan, and also our consultant that'll be presenting the report that was authorized. The council directed the planning board to do this study, and our planning consultant, Carlos Rodriguez, Rodriguez is here this evening to report to the planning board and to the community on his findings. The report is to determine, as you said, Madam Chair, whether this study area, which we're informally calling the North Harrison Study Area, and it centers on the Princeton Shopping Center, meets the criteria for consideration as a redevelopment area, non-condemnation redevelopment area. And what that does is gives us more tools to use in terms of envisioning how this area of town could be, could grow in the future, become more vibrant, more economically viable, and to be a better part of the community. So I know we're all very anxious to hear from our consultant regarding his report.
Madam Chair, Frank Regan, special counsel for the planning board for this meeting. I did want to just make a few points before Mr. Rodriguez proceeds with his testimony, if that's okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
I know that there are some members of the board and the public that may be familiar with redevelopment in New Jersey and others who are not. I just wanted to spend a few minutes just briefly talking about redevelopment, and particularly the planning board's role in the redevelopment process. Redevelopment and its processes and procedures and powers are authorized by a state statute known as the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law, which was approved by the state legislature in 1992, and it's been amended periodically over the last 30 years or so, the latest being in 2018. And the planning board's role in redevelopment is really focused on two major tasks. The one we'll be dealing with tonight, and we'll get into that in a little more detail, and that's the first step, which is undertaking the preliminary investigation for recommendations on redevelopment area designation of property. And this is the first and most essential step, because obviously, if you don't get past this step, then you can't proceed with the next steps and ultimate redevelopment of a property or area. Assuming that that happens, then the next step is the preparation and review of a redevelopment plan for that redevelopment area. And the board has a role in that, as I said, either preparing the plan or reviewing a plan that's been prepared by the municipality and presented to the board. But the board does have a role, one way or another, in that redevelopment plan. And then the last step is a step that the board always deals with in its role as the planning board, and that's development approvals for projects in a redevelopment area, subject to a redevelopment plan. Because the project is being done pursuant to redevelopment does not in any way exclude it from a developer from needing to obtain the typical development approvals, which are sought pursuant to the State Municipal Land Use Law, which the board deals with primarily in its work. Under the first step, the preliminary investigation of the study area, while the governing body identifies that study area and the determination, and actually sets forth whether it should be a non-condemnation or condemnation redevelopment law. That was a change in the last 10 years as a result of some litigation. And in this instance, the governing body determined that it be non-condemnation, and it directed the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation, and it's the board's role and responsibility to determine, generally based on a report and testimony from a professional planner, whether the area meets criteria for designation, which criteria is set forth in the redevelopment law. Its determination is essential to any redevelopment moving forward. While the planning board's role is to recommend to the governing body whether the study area meets the criteria for designation as a redevelopment area. If it does not make such recommendation, as I indicated, the process ends there. If it does recommend it, that all or some of the study area meets the criteria for designation, then it would move forward such recommendation, it would forward such recommendation to the governing body, who would consider the designation of the study area as a redevelopment area by adoption of a resolution. Assuming you get to that step, then the next step, as I indicated, is a preparation of a redevelopment plan, and the governing body can direct the planning board to prepare that plan, or it can have the municipality prepare that plan. Either way, the board needs to participate in that process. If the governing body prepares the redevelopment plan once it's completed, it would be referred to the planning board for its review and determination of whether it complies or is substantially consistent with the master plan at the municipality and designed to effectuate the master plan. And the board would have 45 days to respond to the governing body. If the board prepares the plan, then it would do so and discuss it at a hearing or at a meeting. There's no hearing requirement other than a normal planning board meeting, and then it would make the referral to the governing body, who ultimately would adopt the redevelopment plan by ordinance. And as I indicated, once a redevelopment plan is adopted, any development that occurs in that redevelopment area would be required to obtain typical development approvals in accordance with the Municipal Land Use Law, such as site plan approval, subdivision approval. The purpose of tonight's hearing is the first step for the North Harrison Street Study Area. As indicated, you'll hear a presentation from Carlos Rodriguez, a New Jersey licensed professional planner, and also a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners regarding the preliminary investigation he undertook for the study area. This meeting was noticed in accordance with requirements under the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law by publishing in an official newspaper of the municipality for two consecutive weeks, with the last week, the last notice being within 10 days prior to the hearing, and notice is required to be mailed to the owners of the properties in the study area. There is no requirement for any further notice beyond the properties that are subject to the study, as opposed to the Municipal Land Use Law, which requires notice to property owners within 200 feet, which is not required here. And so the purpose of tonight's hearing is only for the planning board to consider whether the study area meets the criteria for designation as a non-condemnation redevelopment area and make such a recommendation to the governing body for action. Therefore, any questions or comments from the planning board and the public should be focused on the properties in the study area, the testimony, and report presented by Mr. Rodriguez. Future redevelopment of the study area is not for discussion or part of the hearing tonight and will be considered during the redevelopment plan phase, provided the board concludes and recommends that the study area meets the criteria for designation as a redevelopment area, and the governing body formally designates it as a non-condemnation redevelopment area. And finally, whether actual redevelopment of the study area should even be considered, and if so, how it should be undertaken, again, is not for discussion at tonight's meeting. That's a policy decision of the governing body, and any questions or concerns should be directed to the governing body and not the planning board. However, I believe that by directing the planning board to undertake this preliminary investigation that will be presented this evening, the governing body has indicated its belief that the study area warrants consideration for redevelopment. Just wanted to quickly touch upon some of the benefits of redevelopment, not comprehensive, but just, you know, there's a number of reasons why municipalities pursue redevelopment. One is it allows them to undertake comprehensive planning through a redevelopment plan. Coordination of public improvements and infrastructure amongst the municipality and redeveloper. Contributions from redevelopers towards community benefits, public improvements and infrastructure. Create creative financing tools, including redevelopment area bonds. The ability to maximize tax benefits for the municipality through long-term tax exemptions pilots, essentially, that would otherwise not be forthcoming without the redevelopment. Redevelopers fund professionals retained by the municipality to assist in the redevelopment, and overall redevelopment provides flexibility to undertake projects and improvements that other laws and regulations regarding development do not. Thank you. And if the board has any questions before Mr. Rodriguez is sworn in and proceeds with his testimony, be happy to take.
I do, if you could answer, I guess, simply, what can't you do without having the condemnation? I'm assuming that there's, this procedure is, would say, a little easier, if you will, if it's non-condemnation as opposed to condemnation. So I'm just, I'm kind of curious as to what, what's the difference? What limitations, then, are on this type of redevelopment?
That's really the only difference is is that you, you know, the municipality under the non-condemnation redevelopment area cannot exercise condemnation, the power of condemnation. Other than that, all of the other powers that the redevelopment law authorizes can be exercised by the municipality. It's just that you can't condemn someone's property.
Okay.
So if nothing further, Madam Chair, we can have Mr. Rodriguez sworn in and have him provide his professional background and proceed with his testimony. If that's acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could just provide for the record your name and just a quick rundown on your professional educational background?
Sure. My name is Carlos Rodriguez. That's spelled with an S. I have a master's in city and regional planning from the Blasstein School at Rutgers, where I also taught for many years. I am a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've worked in various sundry contexts over the course of the last 35 years. I'm also the editor of The Complete Guide to Planning, the latest edition of The Complete Guide to Planning in New Jersey, which I'm sure is on everybody's bedside table. And I did serve on the Princeton, on the former Princeton Township Zoning Board for 15 years, 10 years as chair.
And I guess you've appeared before this board previously?
I have. Since retiring from the zoning board, I'm now free to appear in front of both boards and actually be paid for it, which is a perk I greatly appreciate.
And you were retained to undertake the preliminary investigation with regards to the North Harrison Street Study Area regarding the Princeton Shopping Center site?
I was, and I did file a report with the town quite some time ago detailing the findings of my preliminary investigation. And I believe that report is also posted on the municipal web, has been posted on the municipal website for quite some time.
Okay. I have nothing further of Mr. Rodriguez, and he can proceed if so be. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so I do have a presentation. I am going to try to share my screen, but I need permission to do that, I guess, first. Carrie? Okay.
Anybody can share their screen. I do not, it's all set up.
I see, okay. So are people seeing the opening slide?
I don't think so.
No, Carlos, you have a standard screen yet. It was there for a minute and it went away.
Oh.
That was, that was actually my screen. I accidentally shared mine.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay, so let's make this bigger. Okay.
Perfect.
Everybody can see that?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, so that's the cover of my report. And as you can see, the various parcels are listed there at the top. And here, you have a chart that shows the parcels. There is actually seven parcels and one ground lease, which is this block 7401, Lot 1.01, which is the bank at the shopping center. It's identified as a separate entity, but it's included in the shopping center property. The other properties are Block 7307, Lot 1, which is at the corner of North Harrison and Clearview. That's the Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad building and lot. There are two single-family homes, eight Clearview and 14 Clearview, which are also owned by the town. They were previously owned by PFARs. The whole package, the three lots, were conveyed to the town. Then the big parcel in the middle, Block 7401, Lot 1.01, 28 acres. That's the Princeton Shopping Center. And that includes this land lease, a ground lease to the bank. Then we have Block 7401, Lot 1.02, which is four and a half acres, which is owned by the former owner of the shopping center, George Comfort and Sons, under this legal entity, PSC2 LLC. And that's the undeveloped property to the north of the shopping center that has frontage on North Harrison and also on Terhune, and has this L-shaped configuration. And then the two properties to the east of the shopping center, Block 7401, Lots 2 and 3, are Grover Park, which is a little over seven acres municipal park. So this map, which I turned the other, in the other direction, shows a compilation of environmental features from the NJDP database for the study area. There's really not much. What exists is called the Rank 1 Habitat-specific requirements, which is 150-foot radius from the Harry Brook and a unnamed tributary to Harry's Brook on the northernmost part of the property. Other than that, the NJDP database doesn't indicate any other environmental features of note that would affect these properties. Okay, so the mayor, who's the head of PFARs, was kind enough to give me access to the interior of this building and to give me a tour. This is a building that reads like a one-story building from the street, but it's actually two stories because it has a depressed first story, which you see is accessed by way of that rickety metal staircase on the slide to the top right. As a result, that basement level or quasi-basement level is very dark, and it's all cut up into a series of smallish rooms. Some of them are with walls that are at odd angles. It's a little, it's a little scary. The other, the other feature that's notable, noticeable about this building is that the electrical feed comes in through the basement. And according to the mayor, it was always shorting out because the basement flooded. So not placed in the best location. The floor above is open and has much better lighting. You see a picture of it there on the bottom left. So but the building has been vacant now for quite some time. And it really is showing its age. It looks quite dilapidated. And it's a special-purpose building that was built for the First Aid and Rescue Squad, and they're no longer there. And so the building is sort of obsolete. And I think it would be, it would probably be costly and complicated to rehab this building, but that's just my speculation. Okay, now next to it is this single-family, one-and-a-half-story Cape Cod, which was, which is owned by the town, which apparently PFARs used. At some point, some of its members might have spent the night there. But according to the mayor, it's been vacant for over seven years. I didn't do an interior inspection of this property because it didn't seem like, it didn't seem necessary. From the outside, it's in fair condition, I would say. And then next to it is another property, which is very similar, which has also been vacant or is used intermittently. There was a car in the driveway when I did my site inspection, but according to the mayor, it's sort of, there's no permanent occupant there. So these three properties were part of, as I mentioned, part of PFARs. PFARs acquired the two residential properties thinking, and this was years ago, thinking that in the future they would expand in that direction. It turns out, they ended up finding a better location. And so they built a new building and debunked from the old one. And these three properties are basically vacant, waiting for a new life. And these three properties are basically vacant, um waiting for a new life. Then we have the Princeton Shopping Center. Which consists of six buildings and about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet of gross leasable area. Three buildings have full basements, one has a partial basement. It has an astonishing number of parking spaces, one thousand two hundred and sixty-three. It opened in nineteen fifty-four, which by the way was the year I was born. And um it looks. From the outside. It, it looks relatively well maintained. Edens has, has, they made some cosmetic improvements after they purchased the property a few years ago. It is not, uh from, so from the outside, it looks relatively well maintained, but all of, all of the physical plant. The uh, the water feed, the sewer, the electrical, the HVAC. Everything is from nineteen fifty-four and therefore uh aging. And as I'm sure anyone who has been to the shopping center recently has noticed. The shopping center has a significant vacancy issue. Uh and it keeps getting, it keeps getting worse. And according to Edens, the current vacancy rate is nineteen and a half percent. It's trending upwards and it may actually have already crossed the twenty percent threshold. Depending upon how you factor in some of those, some of that basement space. And remember that several of the tenants that have left, like the. The health club, they used the full basement as part of their facility. So um some of the basements are used for storage, but others were integral parts of the, of the operation. Now um here. You see some aerials, uh you see an aerial on the right taken while the shopping center was under construction. So it must be from nineteen fifty sometime in nineteen fifty-three. And I show this not just because of the historic interest. But to point out that, as you can clearly see, there's nothing, very little around the shopping center. The shopping center, when it was originally built, was sort of a pioneer in this part of town. That had farms and other things, which was slowly, slowly. Developing with, with subdivision, residential subdivisions. But uh at the time that the shopping center owner uh opened, it was, it was surrounded by farmland. And that may help to explain the configuration that was adopted. Uh because the folks who developed it originally must have thought that this was going to be a facility that would depend. On the motor vehicles for access, that people would drive here. Um and and therefore they built uh. That all the, all those, all those parking spaces, which I believe are actually in excess of what was required. In the, in the former township code, but I could be wrong. But the intention was that to treat this like a standalone destination for the motoring public. And I don't know why they adopted this California style. Layout with the courtyard in the middle. I think it's probably more appropriate in California than here, given. The weather patterns, but, but they did. And um. At the time, it probably made sense and people did drive to the shopping center. But in the meantime, in the meantime, the entire area around it, with exception of that one part, four and a half acre parcel to the north. Has been urbanized. And so this is not an island, an, an auto oriented island in the middle of nowhere anymore. This is a place that has, uh that is within walking distance from the downtown. It's within walking distance from all those surrounding neighborhoods. It's served by various modes of transit, both public and private transit. But it's, it's sort of locked in to this configuration. Which is an unfortunate configuration and the excess parking is, uh is real. I was there multiple times on Saturdays. With lovely weather and that parking lot that's closer to Clearview is always completely empty. Okay, so um the other thing you see on this slide is the. Is the, is the, is a, a plan of the shopping center, which actually comes from Edens. It's their marketing brochure. Uh that identifies each one of the spaces and who occupies it. It's not current. There are more vacancies now than are indicated on this map. But you can see there's a large cluster in the back there facing the back parking lots. And that's a building that has the basement level. And I don't think that's, um that's an accident that you have. A, a, a higher concentration of vacancies in the back rather than in the front. I think that has to do with the, the way the layout is perceived. By visitors, so um. The. Let's see. And here are some examples of. What you increasingly see there, which is uh vacancy, 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 vacancy. Now, the International Council of Shopping Centers. Defines struggling shopping center as having between ten and twenty percent of vacancy rate. And a healthy one obviously is, is one that has less than ten percent vacancy rate. And after twenty percent, twenty percent or higher. The International Council of Shopping Centers considers that to be a shopping center that's failing. And this shopping center is. At the very crest there. It's about to go into the abyss if it hasn't already. Uh and cross that magic twenty percent line. And, and this is not, this, this is not because of COVID. As we all know, this has been, it's been going on for years. And already the shopping center had, had significant vacancies. But the vacancy rate for the portfolio of comparable. Uh commercial assets that Eden zones in the northeast of the United States. The vacancy rate there currently, I'm told, is seven point four percent, seven point four percent. For all the properties that they own uh north of Virginia, I believe. And they own a lot of properties and manage a lot of properties. So this shopping center is, is, stands out. And is different from the others. And the problems with the vacancies have to do with the shopping center itself, not with Edens or with anything else. Okay, now, a couple of data points. That have come out since I filed my report, which I think are relevant and speak to this topic. And everybody knows that bricks and mortar retail has been in trouble even before COVID. Uh we've seen a rise in bankruptcies. We've seen a, a rise in e-commerce. E-commerce is very convenient, but it also has its drawbacks. So there are huge volumes of merchandise that's returned and an underwhelming shopping experience. Bricks and mortar retail is not going away anytime soon. In fact, a recent commercial real estate analysis noted that. And by recent, I mean since I filed this report. Noted that in twenty twenty, the number of traditional bricks and mortar retailers grew by twenty percent. It's knocked my socks off, twenty percent. And that's after taking out all those businesses that closed. So this is a net twenty percent. Now, the report didn't indicate whether this uh growth was happening. Within an existed, the existing footprint, or whether the market was adding additional square footage. My guess is that probably both. Okay, the other report that's relevant. Because everybody seems to think that e-commerce is taking over. Uh and this was just reported a few weeks ago, that the share of e-commerce. Expended of total e-commerce expenditures in the United States on goods and services currently. Is only twelve percent. That means that eighty-eight cents out of every dollar spent by consumers on goods and, and services in the United States. Go to bricks and mortar retail. And by the way, of those twelve cents that are, that go to e-commerce, five cents goes to Amazon. So they've got a significant chunk, which helps explain why they're building. Giant one million square foot distribution facilities all over, all over the world, including all over New Jersey. All right, so here, um I had an, um obviously I'm familiar uh with the exterior uh public. Portions of the shopping center, but I had never had an opportunity to see the non-public portions. And I was able to do so because I scheduled the site visit with their. Property management. And. This is all original, pretty much original equipment and it's not, it's not in good shape. It's not in good shape. There is a significant. Amount of capital investment that needs to, to take place to bring the shopping center uh back to the mainstream. And it's not, it's not been happening. It's not been happening. Now, the. One other factor which is relevant to the shopping center. The terms of. That got, that, the, the terms that guide the relationship between. Uh landlords and tenants have, have been changing quite a bit. And even more since COVID. So the Princeton Shopping Center has. Has, has tenants that are on a month to month basis, that, that would have been inconceivable. Under normal circumstances, even just a few years ago. They have tenants that because of COVID and the need to social distance have taken up space, which. I don't think they're paying for. But they've doubled, specifically the, the, the ballet school. I'm under the impression that that's a freebie for them, so they can spread out more. Instead of being cooped up in that um space above McCaffrey's. So the relationship between the retailers and their, uh and the property owners. Has been changing and retailers have become much more aggressive in negotiating the terms of their leases with the landlords. And many have short-term leases, as I mentioned. Others occupy pop-up stores, right? Where you don't even have a lease. You have some kind of a relationship. You're there for a week, two weeks, three weeks, then you're gone. Um now, this is good news for consumers. Because we get a wider variety of goods and services at competitive prices. And it's good news for the retailers because they benefit from a lower cost environment. And a greater flexibility to innovate, but it's not good news for the landlords. The landlords are feeling the pinch. One additional thing to be mentioned about the Princeton Shopping Center. Is that it was largely built with masonry walls. Many, no doubt, load bearing. So the internal partitions can't be rearranged as easily or on the cheap. Unlike the more recent vanilla box uh formats. That rely on studs and drywall for internal partitions. So there's an element of rigidity to the internal structure of the shopping center. That makes it more difficult to adapt to changing, to the requirements, changing requirements of tenants. And the basement levels are not handicap accessible. Not handicap accessible. So that's, that's a big problem. Okay. Now, we go beyond the shopping center to this property, three eighty-nine North Harrison, which is the vacant parcel on the north. There's not much to say about this property. It's an L shaped property. It has frontage on Turhune and North Harrison. It's relatively flat. It's wooded. It's, as I said, never been developed. Uh but it is encumbered by. A series of easements, which you can see on this diagram at the bottom right, the green areas. Which encumber quite a bit of the site and no doubt would, would cause serious complications. If anybody wanted to develop it. So the frontage on Turhune, I can see being easily developed. But then the area of the dog leg between the two parallel, not parallel, but quasi parallel easements. That's gonna be too narrow. So at least a third of this. At least a third of this property is encumbered by those easements and in all likelihood. It's more than a third.
Carlos, I'm sorry for interrupting, but three eighty-nine North Harrison Street, the tax records show that is three fifty-one Turhune Road.
Yes, and I had this conversation with the contract purchaser and he assured me that that address is wrong. So.
We're just going by the tax record.
I know, I know. And a- a- as I was going as well, but uh they told me that that address was not the correct address. So I, I, I don't know, somebody needs to talk to the tax assessor. Okay, and this brings us to the Grover Park, which is um the last properties in the study area. I'm told that the, that this was at one point part of the shopping center property, that it was. Deeded over to the town when the shopping center was built to act as a buffer between. The town and that neighborhood behind. I'm not sure if this is accurate because that neighborhood behind didn't exist. So I don't know, but in any event, it's a park. It has some ball fields. It has a concession stand or slash. Bathroom, which apparently has been uh closed for many years. It doesn't seem to be well-used or utilized. And the reason for that may be that it gets soggy. When it rains. And I did go there this winter several times and it was soggy. And the other reason for that may be that.
Carlos. Center. Carlos, I'm sorry, I just have to interrupt you that it's, that, that bathroom is open in the summertime. And, and we've confirmed that with the rec department.
Okay.
Not that that changes anything in a major way, but just in the interest of accuracy, the rec department actually does. The town does maintain those bathrooms and they are open in the summer.
Okay. So they should be opening anytime soon now.
We can help.
Okay, so um. Okay, so I stand corrected. Anyway, the, I have, I mean, there are games played there. My, my own son, when he was little, played baseball games there, which I had to sit through. But that's on Saturday afternoons. And it doesn't seem like, and, and I, this is purely impressionistic, but I didn't get the feeling that Grover Park was a major destination for, for folks anyway. And one feature of interest is, and you can see that in the bottom right slide, are these drains that come from the shopping center and drain into, into Gyo Creek, which then crosses the park. Now, Gyo Creek goes into a culvert at Jefferson Road and reemerges here. One of these drains is Gyo Creek. One of these drains must be from the front part of the shopping center that has, the parking lots in the front of the shopping center have grates at grade, which must be feeding a pipe that then ends up here. And the third, I don't know what the third one is, probably also parking lot-related drainage. Or maybe it's for the buildings, I don't know. But this is, so the, the shopping center property drains from, if you look at the topo, it, it generally drains towards Grover Creek, I mean Grover Park. And while Eden's installed some small sort of landscape things when they took over a few years ago, the park, other than the courtyard, which is not pervious, the rest of the park is 100% pervious and has no visible stormwater management strategy. So my supposition is that Grover Park is, ends up being by default the stormwater management for at least the rear portion of the shopping center, if not for all of it. Now, it's true that there's a curb that runs along the separation between the park and the parking lots. But that curb is interrupted in numerous locations. So she, the, the water just sheet flows from the parking lots to the back there. And, but so the, the point is, in order to fix any issues with stormwater in the park, you would have to fix them in the shopping center itself. So, and with that, we'll just go to the criteria. Now, I, I don't want to bore you by reading the, all the legal, the legal language. I'm just going to sort of go through here and highlight which criteria apply to which property. The Princeton Shopping Center, starting with that criterion B, which was the subject of the most recent amendment to the redevelopment statute, which talks about significant vacancies in commercial properties. Well, 19 and a half percent vacancy rate, it's clearly a significant, from the point of view of the ICSC, it's trending up. It may already have crossed that threshold. So in my, in, in my estimation, the shopping center meets criterion B. I also believe it meets criterion D, which is, which talks about an obsolete layout, obsolete infrastructure, and deleterious land use, i.e. the excess parking fields. And then, like every other property in the study area, it meets criterion H because the entire study area is located in a state planning commission designated regional center, also known as a smart growth area in planning area two. So then the vacant parcel, which may or may not be 380, may or may not have a mailing address of 389 North Harrison Street. I believe qualifies under criterion E because the multiplicity of right-of-way easements that crisscross that property are going to make it very difficult to develop. Then the former P-Four's building, I believe qualifies under criterion A because it's dilapidated, it's functionally obsolete, it's lacking in light, particularly in the, in the sub-basement area. I believe it satisfies criterion D for the very same reasons. And these two criteria actually are quite similar. The two town-owned, single-family dwellings on Clearview, in addition to criterion H, I believe satisfy a section, what's known as a section three criterion. In other words, these are properties that don't strictly qualify under the, the, the other criteria, but which are necessary to better redevelop the whole. And so if we're looking at the whole, the whole of the area that the town requested the preliminary investigation for, it would make sense to include those two properties. And then Grover Park is a similar situation. It also qualifies under section three and for the same reasons. Because it's an opportunity to look at that parcel, at those two parcels in conjunction with the shopping center and improve both at the same time. So those are the, that, the, the basis for the designation is laid out in this slide. And then there's this table here, which basically gives you the same information in a tabular form. And you see which criterion applied to which parcel and which ones don't. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions, anyone?
Carlos, did you want to give us a summary conclusion based on your report?
Yes. Did I fail to do that? No, the conclusion is that, in my professional opinion, you, there is absolutely substantive justification for designating all of these properties an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation.
And Carlos, can I ask you a question just based on your experience and, and the law, as you know it, as a professional planner? It's not necessary to show that multiple criteria apply to the study area, correct?
That, that's correct. I, I would never designate a, a, a property that only qualified under criterion H. But that's not the case in, that's not the case here. They qualify under multiple criteria. So yes, thank you.
This is Louise. I, I have a question, or I guess a request. Carlos, could you elaborate a little bit on your view of the unfortunate configuration of the, of the shopping center? I mean, I, I understand that you're, you know, not wild about the interior, the interior area. And I, I don't, I don't mean to make this about me, but I sort of like that interior area. So I, I'm just curious what it is about the overall configuration other than the excess parking, which I think it's self-evident if you ever go there. What about it makes it, makes it obsolete? What is it that contributes to all those vacancies on the other side of the building, et cetera?
So to your point about the interior area, I, I actually find it fairly pleasant. And so that was not the conclusion of my report. I, I, I do notice, however, that it's, it's empty. There are no people there. It's, it's, it's rarely used, even in, in the best of weather. It's just underutilized. And part of the reason is that most of these stores have entrances from the parking lot, and not all of them have entrances from the courtyard. Some you can go through, but others you can't. And so people go to the store and then go back to their cars and leave. And unless there's a, the reason to cross the courtyard to go to another store on the other side, they just don't do it. So it, it's underutilized. Now, in the past, there was an effort to animate it on weekends with special events for kids and so forth. That's not happened lately, obviously. Hopefully we'll get to a point where we can, where we can do that again. But I, I think there's, it's not just a lack of programming that's causing that space to be underutilized. It's something structural, and it has to do with access to the various stores. And obviously, the fact that, that the vacancy rate is trending means there are less people coming to the shopping center to begin with. So, but the thing with the parking lots is that the shopping center is an island that's completely isolated from the rest of the community by those vast parking fields in every direction. And so the, the message that that sends to people is that you're supposed to drive here. You're supposed to drive here. You're not supposed to walk or ride your bike or do any of those things. You're supposed to drive here. That's the environment that this was designed for. And that may have been an appropriate response in 1954. But in 2021, it's, it's not the response that we want. We want, we want to send out the exact opposite message, exact opposite message. And so I would, I would suggest that if somebody were to build a shopping center there today, they would adopt a very different design layout that would seek to engage with the street instead of hiding behind all of those parking spaces. And remember, this is not Route One where people expect to see parking. This is not Route One, this is North Harrison Street. So the, there is no expectation. I mean, yes, you're, you're going to find a parking space, but do you have, does it, do you have to have it in your face when you're driving on North Harrison? No, you don't. Just like you don't have to have it in your face when you're driving on Witherspoon Street or else, anywhere else in the downtown. It happens.
So Thank you, that, that, that answers my question. I, I appreciate it. That's good additional perspective.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Carlos, I think, you know, some of the criteria, I, you know, some members could find, well, let me just say that, you know, the criteria that I find the most convincing is the expanded criteria B. And I'm wondering if you could read the language of that.
Sure. Okay, criterion D. The discontinuance of the use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls or plazas, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial purposes, semi-colon. The abandonment of such building or buildings, semi-colon. Significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years, semi-colon, or the same being allowed to fall into so great a state of disrepair as to be untenantable. So the key provision there is the significant vacancy rate over a period of two years or longer.
Thanks.
And by the way, that provision in the law, the 2018 amendment came about, and I'm going to take credit for this, came about as a result of a study that I did with, with a nonprofit, which has been defunct for a few years, Plant Smart New Jersey, where we looked at the entire state of New Jersey. We went through a detailed database of commercial properties, both retail and office. And we published a report documenting the level of vacant, significant vacancies in, in both the commercial office market and the retail market. And low and behold, and Plant Smart did a few conferences on this topic. And low and behold, Ron Dancer, two years later, introduced that amendment that got adopted by the legislature. I got myself on the back for that.
On that same point, that applies to commercial, real, retail, shopping malls, et cetera, which obviously the shopping center applies to. And does it apply to the entire building or, you know, an entire building or any part of the building?
It, it applies to the facility. So the shopping center is not just retail, it's also office, got plenty of offices and plenty of other things. And, you know, the, the, the office portion has done better because they're medical for the most part. But the retail is struggling. So I interpret this provision to mean vacancy in any space, in a, in a, you know, in a, in a commercial real estate facility. It could be an office building. And it would also, it would, it would also apply to the office building. And in fact, that's, I believe, the criteria that was used to designate the Thanet Circle office buildings. So in this case, it's a little more nuanced because you have office, you have retail, you have services, you have a combination of all these uses. So, but you add them all together and as far as I, you know, as far as I can see, it, it satisfies the criteria.
Thanks, I'll just jump in. I have my hand raised, Wanda, I don't think you could see me. First of all, Carlos, thank you for this report. Read with great interest. And I wonder, talking about the, the parcel that has multiple addresses, that's sort of like a, a flag lot. First of all, everything in here, if you could talk a little bit about criterion H, which appears to be a catch-all under which pretty much most land would fall in need of redevelopment. And talk specifically about criterion E with regard to that, what I call the, what I'm calling a flag lot. I, I think you call it the dog leg or the... I just, I think it was covered very well in the report and I think that the audience could, could benefit from that.
So you want me to address criterion H and criteria?
Yeah, overall, and then, and then criterion E as it, as it applies to that multi-addressed lot.
Okay, so criterion H was adopted when Susan Daslevin was the, was the when Susan Das Levin was the was the commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs. And I was actually in the Office of State Planning at the time. And it came as a complete surprise. It came out of nowhere. We were we were delighted, of course, because it elevated the state plan, the New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Plan in in terms of the redevelopment statute. But we were also puzzled because it it we don't really know what it means. We didn't know what it means. And the statement of legislative intent that was adopted at the same time, when when that amendment went through, talked about the other changes to the statute that were being enacted and said absolutely nothing to say about the the smart growth criteria that was introduced. So it's a bit of a mystery. I think it was meant to 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 support, to to provide additional support to the concept of smart growth planning. But I can't say for sure. And I don't know a single planner in the state of New Jersey that would use that criterion on its own to designate a property. But it is a legally valid criterion. And when it applies, it applies. And in this case, as we know, it applies to all the parcels because Princeton was designated as a regional center by the State Planning Commission back in the day. And and so it it just it just applies. And that's why I included it. Now, criterion E. And I'll read the criterion in its entirety. It reads, a growing lack or total lack of proper utilization of various caused by the condition of the title, diverse ownership of the real properties therein, or other similar conditions which impede land assemblage or discourage the undertaking of improvements resulting in a stagnant and unproductive condition of land potentially useful and valuable for contributing to and serving the public health, safety, and welfare. Okay, we'll stop there. So this property was part of the portfolio of George Comfort and Sons. They didn't need it when they developed the shopping center. I don't know what intentions they had for it. Maybe they wanted to develop it later. Maybe. I don't know. I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, it's been there all these years. It there's there's indication that at one time it was farmed, but I don't think it's been farmed since the shopping center was built in nineteen fifty-four. As we saw in that aerial photo, that whole part of Princeton Township was sparsely populated and but it's it's been developed for many years now. And this is the only site that has not, which is odd, given its prominent location and proximity to the shopping center. Now, the issue is not a it's not an issue with the condition of title. And it's not an issue with diverse ownership. But there is an issue in to my mind, there is a real issue with the multiplicity. Well, first of all, there's an issue with the with the shape of the property, which complicates things from a design point of view. And then there's a real issue with the multiplicity of easements that crisscross that site. And, you know, it would be a nightmare to 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 do something there that would make sense. So I think it it satisfies this criteria. And I think it makes it makes from a redevelopment point of view, it makes sense to have it included in the same package as the shopping center. Because there's there should be a highly synergistic relationship between whatever happens on this parcel and whatever happens on the shopping center going forward. And I'm also seeing this parcel as a parcel that provides sort of a gateway into the shopping center for the affordable housing that is being built or will be built across Turhune on the Thanet Circle properties. And so it would make most sense to take all of this into consideration and develop a planning framework that facilitates all of this stuff to the extent possible. And so including it in this redevelopment designation from a planning perspective, I think makes a tremendous amount of sense.
Thank you for expanding on that. And you might be interested to know that at one time it was being considered as a site for the Princeton Public Library at in the in the mid nineties, I think, before they settled on the downtown redevelopment. And I know I'm right because the chair smiled and understands that. And it was also, if I'm not mistaken, there was an application before the zoning board for an extended care use or a medical use on that site.
That was Sunrise Assisted Living.
Okay, correct. Okay. Well, thank you, Carlos, for expanding on that. I think it's
You're welcome. I
Much more clear.
Want to say we dodged the bullet on having the library located.
I think it I think the library ended up where it should be.
Where it needs to be.
Exactly. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the board?
Can I just ask about the the bogginess, the water problems in the center area of the shopping center and so on? It it's constantly mentioned in early maps actually show several streams going through that area. Is this something that, you know, just has gone away all piped down to the lake or something? Or is it a sort of lurking problem?
Well, the Guo Creek, right? Which goes into a culvert at Jefferson Road, then emerges on the other side of the shopping center and that that photo that I showed with the three pipes. And then I don't know where Guo Creek goes. If not, I've not gone downstream further. But yes, it so it runs under it runs in a culvert for multiple blocks, crosses North Harrison, and then crosses the entire shopping center property. And I don't know whether that was done when the shopping center was built or had previously been done, or I I don't know. I didn't do the 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 research on that. But it sounds like a very interesting project. And maybe when the redevelopment plan for these properties is prepared, maybe we can do some due diligence. We, meaning whoever does it, can do some due diligence to try to find out the circumstances behind that. You know, the 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 piping of of the stream.
It's one of those situations where it probably won't affect whatever goes there or doesn't go there. But at the same time, it's it's something that's always lurking in the background. I think it might be worth checking on.
Well, so I don't want to I don't want to complicate this hearing anymore, but
I'm just going to jump in and say that I think Councilman Cohen actually could talk a bit if we if it's relevant about the situation with the piping and the stream because there's, I guess, and our engineering department, our understanding is that, you know, the issues related to the lack of stormwater mitigation at the shopping center are contributing to the flooding throughout the Little Brook neighborhood and going as far as the Weechief Lane, there are areas there that are directly related to some of the flooding issues here. And I'm not sure if that's what you were getting at, Wanda, but that.
Well, I I think that it's probably something we should not gloss over, but it it shouldn't hold up any development or sales or anything. It's just one of those aspects of that particular neighborhood. So bring it to your attention and you can all explore what it was like. And maybe Councilman Cohen could tell us a bit more about it.
Well, you know, I just want to say it is part of the Harry's Brook tributary system. And we know that there are a lot of neighbors neighborhoods that are negatively impacted by that. So you know, I think Carlos touched on it, but I think that it could well be considered an additional criterion for designating Grover Park because Grover Park is inadequately managing the stormwater that's coming from the from the shopping center. And so that's clearly a negative aspect, inadequately designed aspect of the the stormwater system, the way it is, and something that would need to be remediated, I think, as part of the redevelopment.
Thank you. Any any other questions?
Madam Chair, I just Carlos, I I'm looking, you know, in in your report, you talk, I I know you touched upon the infrastructure, the condition of the infrastructure. And I was wondering if you could just elaborate a little more with regards to, you know, the sort of the capacity issues of the center, the fact that it was built, as you indicated, you know, probably close to fifty years ago. If it was hoping you could touch a little more upon elaborate a little more on that.
Sure. So the the infrastructure is is basically antique. I'm told that the shopping center operator needs to hire contractors who are who have an expertise in fixing equipment that's essentially obsolete. That's antique.
What I mean, what kind of equipment are we?
Electric electrical. Gas. I mean, I don't know, everything. The I'm also told that by industry standards, the the shopping center should have two to three times the capacity that it has in 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 gas, natural gas supply, that it has insufficient that the pipes that bring in the the water supply are also insufficiently dimensioned. So basically, the the feed, the the infrastructure that's feeding the shopping center is undersized, severely undersized relative to industry standards. And that's hampering the shopping center. But to fix that is, as you can imagine, a major undertaking, very, very expensive, big capital outlay, and not something that a shopping center owner operator is eager to do when they have a vacancy rate in excess of twenty percent. So yeah.
Okay. And and I know you also, I mean, you 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 elaborated with regards to some of the design concerns with, as a result of the age of 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 the shopping center and how it was, you know, how it is designed. Talking about the parking lots surrounding, I guess, the entire structure, there's a number of, I guess, rear-facing retail spaces. I mean, can you that that's obviously not how retail spaces are are designed or I they should be designed. Is that correct? I mean, can you elaborate a little on that?
They have no visibility. So unless you know that they're there, you don't you don't even know what's there. And it may, I don't think it's a coincidence that that's where you have the highest vacancy.
Okay.
Rates. Right at the back there.
Got it. And 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 you also talked about the the inability to sort of be flexible, you know, to changing retail needs in terms of space for retailers because of the, I guess, the, you know, the the masonry walls. You can elaborate a little on that.
So that diagram that I showed has the layout for every leasable space in the shopping center. And those are hard walls. If you want a seven hundred and thirty-five square feet space, and they happen to have a seven hundred and thirty-five square foot space, then you're in luck. But if you want a nine hundred and thirty-five square foot space, and they can either only offer you a seven hundred and thirty-five square foot space or an eighteen hundred square foot space, then you're out of luck. Because nobody is moving those those masonry walls to accommodate the the needs of 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 a specific tenant. Right? So that introduces an element of rigidity that makes it much more complicated to lease smaller spaces. It has to be a perfect fit.
So that contributes to to the the vacancy and the inability to attract certain types of tenants, I assume.
I I think so. I it it has to.
Thank you.
Anyone? Further questions, comments? Suggestions?
Well, I think, Madam Chair, if you have, if there's no further questions of the board members, I don't know if the board professionals have any. If not, then maybe open it up to the public.
Yeah, I was just going to add one more point to our consultant's very good point about the excess parking and the sort of the obsolete design and layout of the shopping center. In my research done on in the historical items we have in our office, particularly from Princeton Township, it was clear that this was going to be a regional shopping center. It was designed to draw from all of central New Jersey. Harrison Street, which, as you know, is widened to a four-lane boulevard type road in the whole length of the front of the shopping center, was intended to be a connector from what is now Route One and Route Twenty-Seven over to Route Two-O-Six. So it was going to be part of a regional highway system that would bring you into a regional shopping center. Harrison Street was never expanded for its full length to be anything more than a local road as we know it today. Also, Turhune Road was going to be a proposed bypass around the downtown and part of a regional highway system. And that was never built. That was just over the years. The the municipalities decided not to build that. So you can see that even the setting, I mean, the the shopping center was designed for a larger, more regional destination set to be a destination for regional shoppers. And that over time changed. The situation changed around it. And at the same time, a low-density residential neighborhoods were developed around it. So I think it's very much a story of the original concept, which is manifest in the way the architecture is now is is rather obsolete.
And please, I'd just like to say a couple of things about criterion H. You know, and it is sort of a catchall. It it reads, the designation of the delineated area is consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law or regulation. And that that's, you know, seems on its face incredibly broad. And it is, but it but it does mean specific things. It means that sustainability is important. It means transit orientation is important. It means climate resilience, access to climate resilience, access to housing choices, and affordable housing, and basically growth in the right way, in the right place. And so I just sort of wanted to throw that out there because, you know, not to make Mr. Rodriguez's presentation for him at all, but what, when I think about that very general criteria, I, 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 I think about these specific objectives, community objectives that are, that were so important when we were creating the green building and environmental sustainability element of the master plan, and thinking about the land use implications of that last year around this time. So that's all.
Let's see. I know we have some members of the public here who'd like to speak. Is there anyone else from the boards or committees who wanted to say something before we return to that? All right. Well, let's, let's open the platform to the, the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak or ask questions on this?
Yes, we have 64 members of the public in attendance, and we have seven who are, have their hair, hands raised. The first is Mr. Nat Bottenheimer and Barbara Buckings after that. So I will promote Nat.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Nat Bottenheimer. I live on White Pine Lane in the Little Brook neighborhood. And I'm speaking to express my support for efforts to activate the Princeton Shopping Center and to make it a stronger community to our contributor, to our community by providing more shopping and housing opportunities, and by making it more walkable and sustainably accessible. I hope that members of the planning board and subsequently council will commit to using the area in need of redevelopment tool in their approach to achieving these goals. Without focused intentional action, as I think you convincingly heard, the shopping center is at risk of becoming obsolete amongst deficiencies or impervious surface vacant parking spaces and a relationship to the surrounding streets. It makes walking and biking appealing to only the heartiest or those who have the fewest travel options. The area in need of redevelopment designation will give the municipality and the shopping center a viable and flexible tool to help the center evolve to meet the needs of the shopping center's owners and also to better benefit the broader community. We have in our own town, a visible example of how the redevelopment process can lead to positive outcomes. Pines Plaza is that place, and it is arguably Princeton's most vibrant public space. The shopping center and our community as a whole can similarly benefit from similarly forward looking planning and design and prospect that I enthusiastically look forward to, and that I urgently encourage members of the planning board to endorse support in advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person there. Carrie.
Yes, that would be Barbara Buckings and then Frank DeSanzo.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt, we have a, a procedure for the planning board that public is sworn in for testimony.
Sure. Thank you.
Hi. So apologize for, well, we're not apologize, there's two daughters joining me. Thank you very much for the report and for the meeting. I have a couple of reports. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Before you proceed, could you just raise your right hand? I just want to swear you, and do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do. Thank you.
Just give us your name for the record.
Yes, Barbara Buckings. So I have a couple of questions. So first is about Criterion D, both about parking and configuration. So Mr. Rodriguez said that people, you know, get around on public transport and walk. So I'm wondering whether you have, you or anyone has a good sense of the percentage of people in town who can walk and bike realistically to this area. I know that you said that there's some signaling going on with the parking, but I'm worried about this. So my sense is that there's several constituencies that can't make it to the shopping center in any way other than by car. The very significant elderly population in town, people with young children, anyone for whom very cold and very wet weather is in, you know, disposition. And then obviously the health considerations during COVID where public transport is risky for people who wish to avoid additional risk. So if you have any data on who among the existing residents of the town you conceive might be able to walk to this area or make it to this area in any way other than by car, that will be appreciated. The second thing about the configuration, the California layout, from my perspective and the perspective of these ones here, the California layout has been a huge boon during COVID. It's the only place we could go. We were there every day. And yes, it was empty, but everything in Princeton was empty because of COVID. Then I have a question about Criterion B vacancies. So I looked up, I wasn't sure what report Mr. Rodriguez is referring to, so I'd be interested in knowing which it is. I looked up quickly online and I found the Cushman and Wakefield Report for the first quarter of 2021 for office real, real estate, and it said that the vacancies in central Jersey is 19%, which by some amazing coincidence or not, is exactly what you quoted for the shopping center. So by that metric, the shopping center is entirely average, rather than sort of the outlier and the outlier to be rescued that it is portrayed at. I also want to note a sort of an addendum that the population of New Jersey appears to be decreasing. So any plans that rely on sort of increased tax revenue, I'd appreciate if that was taken into account. And then the third and final point, with regard to smart growth and opportunity to develop the entire area, that's very much in the eye of the beholder. And so I'm worried that this criterion is so vague as to leave room for potential government overreach. So Mr. Rodriguez does seem to have small children, and that's fine. That's his perspective, and that's, that's valuable. But to me, the Princeton Shopping Center and the space around it, the open space around it, including Grover Park, has been invaluable, not just during the pandemic, but also during the pandemic. It's a fabulous space, and I can confirm that the bathrooms are indeed open and that it's a great meeting place for families with young children. So if you can take that into account, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that, that was a lot, a lot of questions there. I'm not sure that I remember all of them. But let me try to answer the ones that I do remember. With respect to getting to the shopping center other than by car, I did not do a, you know, an analysis of how people were arriving at the shopping center. That really was not part of my scope of work. I, there are, people do come by bus. New Jersey Transit serves it. People from the institute from a dance study sends their shuttles there. I believe the theological seminary might do the same thing. I don't know, but there, there is, there is some service on the transit side. And I live six blocks away. So I, I walk to the shopping center regularly. And I see many people walking on Valley Road coming from those neighborhoods on either side that walk to the shopping center. I don't see people coming through Grover Park to the shopping center. But again, this, these are, this is impressionistic material. I can't point to an authoritative or quantitative source for those observations. Those are just my observations.
Carlos, before you move off that, that, that point, I just, within the context of your study and talking about the design of the center, I mean, is it a, because you talked about it being a car centric center. So, so in terms of providing, you know, being friendly to, to pedestrian traffic and bicycle use, I mean, what's your opinion with regards to the center as it currently exists? You know, in, in being safe, the connectivity to the, the surrounding community? Because I think that's an important factor.
I, I don't think that any effort has been made to increase that connectivity. I don't think that that was part of the original design, and it, and it still isn't. And unless I'm mistaken, you, there are signs in the shopping center that say, don't bicycle. Don't bicycle in the courtyard. No skateboarding in the courtyard. I'm pretty sure there are signs there that they, they tolerate you arriving by bicycle. I don't know. I don't know that, I don't even know that if there are any bicycle racks, but they definitely don't want you bicycling around the courtyard. So
I'd like to, I'd like to just comment on this as the council liaison to the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee. One of the things that we're very concerned about is that this area around the shopping center is a fairly high incidence area for pedestrian automobile crashes, both at the Valley Road Harrison intersection and also Turhune Harrison intersection. And so I think it's safe to say that the, while there are sidewalks and we have traffic signals to help people cross, the accommodations are really not up to par, up to what they should be to make it really a safe place to walk and bicycle.
Yeah, and North Harrison is, is over engineered. So it encourages speeding. I mean, all of this can be fixed, but it requires, it requires capital improvements. So, and then the, the other, it seems like the other question that you asked had to do with vacancy rates. And it seems like you looked at vacancy rates for commercial office properties, which you say the average is 19%, which doesn't surprise me at all because everybody knows the commercial office market has been limping along in New Jersey for many years, well before COVID. And some of the more savvy operators like Matt Kelly have dumped their entire portfolio of commercial office properties and moved to residential. But we're not talking about commercial office here. We're talking about a shopping center. And 19% vacancy or 20% vacancy in a shopping center is not a good sign. And it's not the norm. It's just not the norm. So I would direct you to the International Council of Shopping Centers. They have a publication called Dollars and Cents of Shopping Centers. If you really want to learn a whole lot about shopping centers, that would be a good place to start.
Okay. Other questions from the public?
I just wanted to respond to one of other questions which related to the activity and use of Grover Park. And I just want to make clear that that park is protected by green acres restrictions. It cannot be built on, and that's not why it's included in this area for investigation. It's included to look at how it can best serve the adjacent, both residential and commercial uses and the other properties that are seen as part of the area, the potential area in need of redevelopment. So I just wanted to lay your mind at rest that we're not looking at getting rid of Grover Park in any way.
And I also wanted to add that in terms of the interior space, that it is absolutely beloved. I can, to, to parents who have no other place for their children to run around, even in non-COVID times, and want to sit and eat out and have their children play. And I don't think that there's any interest in, I mean, the planner who prepared the report may not like that, that particular configuration because of the way the retail is. But that doesn't mean that, that the courtyard and the green spaces have to be eradicated. In fact, I, I think it's certainly my hope that we'd have more green spaces and less parking and that they would be more easily accessible to parents there. I don't think there's any plan to, to, to destroy that center space.
Anybody else? Comments, questions? Yes, Louise? No?
Carrie, do we have anyone else waiting in the?
Yeah, yes, we have, I think it's eight individuals now waiting. The next person is Frank DeSanzo and then S L R.
Mr. DeSanzo, if you could just raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just for the record, if you can just give us your name.
I'm Frank DeSanzo. I'm a resident of Princeton. I live on Linden Lane. Madam Chairwoman, thank you for the opportunity for addressing this group. I just had two questions as relates to the shopping center. The first one's come up before regarding Criterion B and the vacancy rate. I'm wondering if Mr. Rodriguez has any data on the vacancy rate pre-COVID. I know he said this isn't COVID related, but I think anybody that lives in the area, I know I can at least rattle off five or six stores right off the top of my head that coincidentally are not closed somewhere between like March 2nd and the last couple of weeks. So I just had a question, is there historic vacancy rate data available? My second question was retaining, regarding Criterion D and the obsolete layout as it relates to parking. If memory serves, a lot of that parking is going away because of that development that's going to go up there near the park by the drugstore that has the affordable housing component. So did Mr. Rodriguez take into account that there would be that much less parking available when that is done? And how does that overall, since this whole parcel was listed in his presentation as being subject to, to this, I think it's A and R, how does that, that development of that housing fit into all this? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? No?
Well, let me try to address the, the questions. The, I did request from the shopping center owner and operator historic, like for the last five years, vacancy rate analysis. They never gave that to me. They gave me the snapshot from March of 2021, which is the 19.5% plus or minus the basement. So I don't have a baseline. I don't have a baseline to to judge it against. But the, the report that that I, that I referred to earlier, which was an analysis of vacancy rates in shopping centers and commercial office for the entire state of New Jersey that was based on a proprietary database that we were able to commandeer. That was done in 2016. And the shopping center did, did not appear as a distressed property at that time. So it didn't, it didn't trip the wire to, to show up on our list as a distressed property, unlike the office building on Fanat Drive, which did show up as a distressed property. So back then, I think the shopping center had very few vacancies. The incidence of vacancies has increased significantly. But it's, it's not due to COVID. They were in trouble before COVID. They were in trouble before COVID. There, there are spaces at the shopping center, for example, the main, what used to be the Main Street Restaurant, which left years and years ago, I don't even know, five or six years. That space has never been, has never been occupied again. So it's not COVID. And as I indicated, the, the, the same organization, their portfolio. Their portfolio. Of comparable properties. From Virginia to Maine, which are numerous, their vacancy rate there. Uh, average vacancy rate is seven point four percent and that includes the Princeton Shopping Center. So Princeton Shopping Center is skewing their vacancy rate in the wrong, in the wrong direction.
I I'd have to respectfully, I'd have to respectfully disagree, I've I've only been living here for three years and and that restaurant was open when I came here. Just for example, you cite the restaurant as being gone for years and years, but. That that's I guess that's that's criterion B.
Main Street was open when you moved three years ago.
Yeah, it was. Um. The second one is just criterion D and the parking and the new development that's going on there, which is going to take up, I think, a substantial portion of the existing parking. And how would that fit into this redevelopment project?
I'll 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 tell you about the parking, the the industry standard. The industry standard, and this is the, and when I mean industry, I'm talking about the International Council of Shopping Centers. I'm talking about the Urban Land Institute. Um, I'm talking about the the groups that represent these facilities or build them and manage them. The industry standard for a parking for a shopping center of roughly three hundred thousand square feet is four per thousand. Four per thousand. In this case, we have something like, I forget now the exact number, but it's like five point eight per thousand, it's in my report. It's almost fifty percent more, almost fifty percent more, so. Um. And it's plain to see, because the parking fields are empty. Now, what's going to happen with new new development going forward? I can't tell you because that's not part of the scope of my, the work that I was hired for. But I can tell you objectively that today, that shopping center has a parking standard that is not justifiable. Under any circumstances.
Well, and let me elaborate a little if I might, just with regards to the inclusionary zoning, because. Um, you know, the the inclusionary zoning that was adopted by the municipality for portions of the site was done. To meet the town, the municipality's obligations under the New Jersey Fair Housing Act. Uh, and as a result of its settlement with Fair Share Housing Center. Um, yeah, this is done. Um, however, you know, rather than dealing with these projects sort of in a one-off basis. And neither one of these projects, while the zoning is in place, neither one of these projects has been approved. Um, yet by by the municipality, uh, and it remains to to happen. Um, and the area in need of redevelopment review process that we're discussing, that the board is considering this evening. Um, is completely separate from the municipality's affordable housing compliance plan. Um, so I unfortunately, you know, i- it's two separate items. The zoning is in place and and what what Mister Rodriguez is looking at is current conditions, you know, on the site. Uh, which is, which is the parking. So that, you know, the future development of that site. Uh, in in accordance with the affordable housing zoning really can't be considered as part of his, you know, analysis.
So then Mister, I want to make sure I say this right, Regan. I mean, thank you for that clarification, so these things have kind of been done independent of each other. But obviously won't be allowed to exist ultimately if they're both approved independent of each other. Additionally, um. If one is approved first, let's say the affordable housing project that would reduce the parking that may impact. The um criterion D as it relates to obsolescence and parking. If that takes up a significant amount of the existing empty parking.
Yeah, I I mean, procedurally, the way it would happen is, look, you know, the board is is conducting a hearing tonight. Um, I think the hope is that they come to a decision this evening. Um, if that's the case and 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 there is a recommendation to move forward with the redevelopment area designation. Then I would expect that would be taken up by the governing body relatively quickly. Um, as I indicated, w- we all recognize that the the affordable housing zoning is in place for the site. Um, you know, but again, those developments have not been formally presented. Uh, to the municipality for from a development approval standpoint. And really, one of the goals of of the redevelopment, if it was to proceed, you know, with these properties is to. Um, provide comprehensive coordinated redevelopment of the entire area. Um, you know, the the affordable housing development with a a hopeful redevelopment of of the shopping center. Um, so so that, you know, all of the parties can work together to ensure that it's a much better project. Than sort of individual parcels being developed independent of each other.
Thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have uh six members with their hands raised. Uh, the next individual is S L R and then Felicia Spitz.
Okay.
If you could uh just raise your hand, your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Do.
If you could just give us our, your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Susan Romeo, R O M E O.
Thank you.
Um, Mister Rodriguez, you said um uh in response to a question from one of the other members of the public. That these were your impressions and I'm I was glad to hear you say that because frankly. I found a lot of the things in your report to be not only impressionistic. But somewhat contrary, I think, to the factual experiences of the people who live nearby. Um, and to people who, like Mister DeSantis pointed out, have lived in the area and recognize. Um, the vacancy rates uh and what has happened since Edens took over. I'm a little concerned about the fact that we taught out this nineteen percent vacancy rate without. Um. Acknowledging the fact that, you know, since Eden took over, the lighting store left, the toy store, the vacuum store. Main Street, uh UPS, Camillo's, all of these things, all of these people left. And based on my personal experiences, the um Eden's behavior and Eden's. Um, raising rents had a great deal to do with that. So we lost in the neighborhood a great many very practical. Um, stores, we lost access to them, so now we've got this situation where. Um, i- we've got this vacancy rate and, I mean, I've heard you talk about, you know, it's empty a lot. Well, it's COVID and it is a very different situation. But that parking lot, other than the Clearview Avenue part, is often full. And the park is used pretty much every night of the week during the summertime by children. But uh playing ballgames, so um I do understand there's a problem with the infrastructure. And I find it interesting that Eden's has sat back. Um, based driven many of the tenants away, not put the money into the infrastructure. And now they're going to essentially benefit by this uh, the town coming in and helping them. Um, I I find that pretty disturbing. Um, and I also find the fact that um. This concept that you believe, Mister Rodriguez. That the shopping center is obsolete doesn't take into account the extreme convenience it provides to people in the area. Um. Yeah, the ability to run in and out. And to be able to find parking, to come home from work, to run over to the shopping center, grab something at his hardware. Um, grab something quickly um at uh at McCaffrey's. And know that parking isn't going to be a problem like it would be if it was configured like downtown is a real benefit. Um, I also believe from, you know, being in the neighborhood for quite a while. That the reality is many people are at that parking, uh at that shopping center several times on a weekend. So I'm a little. Confused by the descriptions that you give, which certainly I I recognize this being accurate during COVID. But I don't recognize this being accurate the other times and I certainly find a. Odd, given the fact that that's one of the reasons why the shopping center has become less functional. Less useful to the people in the area is the fact that many of the things that we depended on. The post office, which I don't remember if that was pre-Edens or after Edens that they left. But um many of the other things that you could run over to were driven away by Edens. As and the, it also very much changed the usage for that center area. Obviously, when um Main Street was driven away, when there were less functional. Stores in the area, so to make a decision based on. Impressions is um is a is a little bit unnerving to people who live in the neighborhood. Um, and depend on that shopping center and. Recognize that it o- offers us a really nice alternative to the downtown area. Which we obviously all are close enough to also take part in. So I would just like those comments to be part of your consideration.
Right, we'll be on the record, thank you very much.
And I'd like to answer that because I think that's more relevant for the governing body of which I'm also a member as opposed to the planner and I I. Completely agree, I hear what you're saying, I completely agree with it. And what you've described is exactly what brought the council to this project. I live right behind the si- uh the shopping center, so I'm um acutely aware of the loss of all of those. Um, stores um that you describe and also how it is really are the place for Princetonians. Who shop daily as opposed to um the central business district, which is really more for tourists. Um, and we are extremely upset with Edens and their lack of um. They they have neglected the shopping center and one of the reasons, as as I um described. The redevelopment statute, um as it was expanded by Governor Murphy in two thousand and nineteen. Was designed to give municipalities the tool to stimulate and to um. Commercial vitality in areas that had become underutilized and that's exactly what has happened with our shopping center. Um, we have been struggling for more than a year to try to figure out how to bring the shopping center back to life, how to engage with Edens. Um, and you know, I will just say that tonight's hearing is really not about the plans for the shopping center going forward, it's a, it's a. Uh, a hearing about um whether it needs redevelopment, but I can, I'm just saying, wearing my governing body cap. That the reason why we have gotten to this point is because we feel that the shopping center is so important to the community. It's not meeting the daily needs of the residents. Um, and this is the way to bring Edens to the table, we're not doing them a favor, we're not helping them. We are asking them to step up and do what they should have been doing for the past ten years. And we hope that this will jumpstart that process.
Thank you, um, I I appreciate that explanation um for how we've come here. But I still have concerns about a planning report and and I am familiar and I have. Done these sorts of cases, I am familiar with those zoning cases and how they work. But I am concerned about things uh being based on impressions that are actually, I think. Contrary to the factual experiences of people who live in the area and that's a concern to me. Um, and I do appreciate your explanation, I'm still a little confused by, I still feel a little bit like what are we. You know, I don't know how we get around the rewarding Edens part, um, but uh um. I I'm just was trying to speak to the concept of the planning of the report and how. Much I did feel that the concept of obsolete and some of these other concepts were not based on the facts. Of the area, thank you.
Thank you and.
Thank you. Uh, we have five members of the public still with their hands raised. Uh, we have Felicia Spitz and Leighton Nuland, I will move Felicia over.
Felicia, if you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could just, for the record, give us your name.
My name is Felicia Spitz and I live in Princeton at Five Hazlet Avenue. Um, I a- agree with the um, the former questioner. Um, about kind of how precious the shopping center is and um. I personally love that I can actually go someplace and park and not have the hassle of the meters and. Pedestrians and everything in the crowded downtown area, so I love the shopping center. That said, um, what I was startled about in the report is there's infrastructure that is almost seventy years old. Um, wh- what's the difference between condemnation and not in need of condemnation? In terms of the infrastructure, because it would seem to me that when you don't have large enough pipes for water and gas. And when you have, you know, stormwater mismanagement or maybe non-management at all. Um, these things are going to lead this area to get into much worse shape pretty quickly if if this continues.
The, I I I'll just address the condemnation issue, I mean, in the context of of redevelopment. Um, you know, condemnation versus non-condemnation, condemnation is, you know, use. Uh, of the power of eminent domain by a governmental entity to acquire someone's property. You know, when essentially they don't want to sell it to you, to the government, so that's the case here. I mean, I I understand what you're talking about is potentially the condition of the infrastructure. And whether it should be condemned, say, by, you know, the construction official of the municipality because of its its physical condition. There's a difference in 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 it with respect to redevelopment and the use of condemnation, what we're just talking about. Is 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 the municipality's ability to condemn the property, to take it and use it for another purpose.
So, um, uh, it might be worthwhile to point out that the criteria. For designating an area in need of redevelopment condemnation. And the criteria for designating an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation. There, it's the exact same criteria, so it's just a matter of choice whether the town wants to. Um, you know, play rough or or not. And in this case, the town has chosen to partner with the property owners. And so this is a non-condemnation redevelopment area if in the future. Uh, there's the falling out, uh, the town would have to start all over again, the whole process, all over again. Including this, this preliminary investigation, they'd have to rehire me to do the same work. So, just point that out, but.
Can I, can I interject here at this time, Madam Chair? Uh, we have six people with their hands raised, the number keeps increasing, it is twenty minutes to ten. I think we should, if we could take a quick break, that would be great for all of us. Can I request a a five or ten minute break?
How about five minutes since we're nearing the end of the meeting?
Okay, then that would be at nine forty-five or nine forty-six.
Yes.
Nine forty-six, sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll stand up, stretch. Nobody filled me in on this, are we supposed to be finishing this at this meeting or are there other? Aspects we're supposed to be doing?
We were hoping to finish it this evening, yeah, it was the only item on the agenda.
Okay, so.
We still have a number of hour, we still have an hour and fifteen minutes left if we're going to adhere to the eleven o'clock.
Right, no, I'm just, I'm just curious because. The line has a way of filling up and filling up and suddenly.
Yes, we now have seven people with their hands raised.
That's true. I think if folks keep to the please, three minutes guideline, which you could say a lot in three minutes. Hopefully, we can we can finish up. I certainly hope so.
Yeah, that would be consistent with what the council does, and it's probably fair to everybody to give everyone a chance.
Okay, the next individual to speak will be Leighton Nuland and then Megan Mitchell.
Okay, Mr. Nuland?
I'm actually finished. You can take me out.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will.
Yes?
Mr. Nuland, if you could just raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just for the record, if you could just give us your name?
My name is Leighton Nuland. I live at 230 Birch Avenue, Witherspoon, Jackson, Princeton.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board and attending public. Just a quick historical perspective. I'm actually older. Hate to say it, but the truth is I'm older than the shopping center. And when I was 13 years old, being born and raised here in Princeton, I worked at the Acme supermarket, which was where Walgreens is at right now. In addition to the Acme being at the shopping center, we also had an AMP there. Shopping Center means a lot to me. It means a lot to everyone, I'm sure, on this call for nostalgia reasons and for all that we've experienced since its inception. But as I said, it's old. And to be honest, with my age now, if you told me that I could be rehabilitated tomorrow morning at 7 o'clock, I would be at the doorstep at 5:30, making sure I would be the first one in. But but we're human. And men, women who are old seldom, if ever, find the fountain of youth. But that's just not true with land development, nor is it true with municipalities. For those people who are on the call, who are in the Littlebrook area in close proximity, I hear you and I feel you. But I would suggest to you that if we get the opportunity to make the shopping center all that it can be and we do whatever we can do in site development, that what you enjoy now, you will be able to enjoy even more with the correct input by those who are in close proximity and make sure this is done right. I worked very hard for over two years to make the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood, along with other people, a historic district. But the fact is, the Princeton Shopping Center is not historic. It's just plain old. The infrastructure is bad. Everything there is in bad need of repair. I'm sure I heard Carlos say that the shopping center has to get first-class mechanics in there because the work, the infrastructure is obsolete. And you probably need people that get mega money per hour to maintain and fix it. Last but not least, our vision for the future of Princeton and our mindset in smart growth should encompass all the things we need and deserve in Princeton. A shopping center filled with energy, vibrancy, and a diverse and eclectic mix of retail and service-oriented entities, along with restaurants and outdoor activities that serve not just those in close proximity, but the entirety of Princeton. And more importantly than perhaps all of that is the fact that the revenue generated from the types of stores that would be invited to be there would help stable our growing tax base. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next individual is Megan Mitchell and then Tinnicky.
There she is. We got somebody swearing in.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
We can't see you though, but.
I am.
Corner right now.
Hold on. Start video.
There you go. Could you just if you could raise your right hand, do you swear that you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. If you could just give us your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Megan Mitchell, and I live on Clearview Avenue. My question, I know we've been focusing on the shopping center, and the shopping center is near and dear to all of us, trust me. I'm there sometimes several times a day, and I am able to walk, but sometimes I still drive. Depends on if it's raining. My question has to do with the properties on Clearview, which are much like the rest of our street in our neighborhood, Cape-style homes that were they were purchased by the town. And my question is if those buildings need to be part of this redevelopment plan. The town already owns these properties, and so the question of condemnation or non-condemnation, eminent domain, that's already that that ship has sailed. And it has really nothing to do with the rest of the shopping center area. It has very much to do with our block and the cohesiveness of our neighborhood. In the beginning of the presentation, Mr. Rodriguez mentioned the three properties on the corner of Harrison and Clearview. But there's only one property on the corner of Harrison and Clearview, and that is the P-Farce Building, which I also love, and I I hope that that could be renovated into an amazing office building or restaurant. But the two homes are on Clearview. They face Clearview, and they are in decent shape. And they are only noted in the report on page 37 as qualifying for this under provision eight or H, sorry, which Mr. Rodriguez himself, unless I'm reading it incorrectly, and you said he would never use only criteria H to recommend that something be part of a redevelopment plan. So I would respectfully request that these properties be removed from this from this plan completely. And I want you to know if that's possible.
So the just a small correction. The in addition to criteria H, I did indicate that the properties qualified under section three of the redevelopment statute, meaning that there are properties that are not blighted but are part of a bigger framework that and so therefore they should be planned for comprehensively. Now, the before there can be a plan, there has to be a designation. And that's what we're discussing here tonight. What the town will or will not do with those properties is not part of what we're discussing tonight. It's for the town to decide. And those decisions will be done if this preliminary investigation moves forward and the properties are designated, then the step following that, as Frank indicated earlier at the beginning of the meeting, would be to do a redevelopment plan. And so the time to have that conversation is when the redevelopment plan is being prepared. Right now, the conversation is just about whether the properties meet or don't meet the relevant criteria. And in my report, I indicated that, in my opinion, they do meet. So when I understand what I understand what you're saying, but it seems like.
Yeah, the town already owns it.
You're expressing a concern about something that's not known, right? Yes, the town owns them. Before that, P-Farce owns them. One of them has been empty for seven years. Is this a condition that's sustainable? I don't think so. So but the point is, whatever, however, those properties are treated in the future will be will be determined by whether, A, they're designated as part of the broader area, and B, how the redevelopment plan handles them. So right now, the conversation is simply about whether they meet the criteria. And my conclusion is that they do.
Okay. I request that they be removed from the from the area because they don't fall in the same under the same category as the rest of the properties. It's just not and it isn't. It isn't part of the entire area. It's a separate area. It's a residential street with small homes on it, and the town already owns it. It doesn't make sense with everything else that's going on.
Mr. Cohen has his hand raised.
Yeah, I just want to respond, Megan. I think that I hate to drag you out for another meeting, but I think that it's a more appropriate conversation to have next Tuesday when council is determining what the area, whether we're going to designate the area in need. Because we're going to hear from the planning board, you know, that these properties qualify or they don't qualify. I think Carlos made a reasonable case that those two houses do qualify, but doesn't mean they have to be included when council actually creates the redevelopment area. And so it really is more appropriate to have that conversation on Tuesday night.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
One last point on that, even if they are included, as Carlos, I think, pointed out, the uses don't necessarily have to change in the future.
Yeah, I think that the uses could change back to their original use, which were single-family homes. I mean, the town could sell them and people could live there.
Okay, we have six six members of the public with their hand raised. So would you like? We have Tinnicky and Joel Schwartz.
Okay. Hi.
If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, if you could just provide your name?
Yes, my name is Tinnica Thio, and last name is spelled T-H-I-O. I live five, six blocks away from the Harrison Street Shopping Center. And I've been a resident in Princeton for 30 years. So I have seen the progression of the shopping center well before COVID. And and it's not been great. But even well before COVID, honestly, this site is an outdated parking crater with an island of buildings in the center of it. While my family and I have very much enjoyed the Central Courts and all the happenings and all the shops and restaurants in there, it is very hard to reach, whether you walk or bike or drive a car. And if you drive a car, it is very hard to get out of because the ingress and egress is just so ill-designed. My husband has had multiple near misses on that intersection of Valley and Harrison, and many of my neighbors have had the same experience. At one point, my husband only escaped being hit by a car by placing his hands rather hard on its hood. So I hope that the whole thing is just outdated and makes me cringe. And the what's really attractive for this area, this entire area, being rethought is the issue of stormwater management. I'm a climate change freak. I know that we're going to have much more and much more frequent extreme downpours. And unless we address that, this nice park is really going to be in trouble. The stream going through it is already eroding the banks much faster than than we ever thought possible. And we really need to do something about that. So treating the whole area as a continuous whole and dealing with the stormwater in a holistic way, I think, is a great thing that designating it as an ANR would allow us to do. I know that I know many neighbors who walk or bike there. I know many more who would walk or bike there if it were safer. And I know that some of my neighbors have no choice but to walk there with their laundry because they don't have an in-house washing machine, and there's no laundromats in the area where they live, in the neighborhood where they live. So it is absolutely a necessary thing. But it's just fallen in such disrepair. And then the parcel next door, the old P-Farce building, has been not used for such a long time that DPW has seen fit to use to use its sidewalk as a dumping ground for the snow that they have plowed from elsewhere. And Councilman Cohen knows my obsession with the snow on sidewalks. This heap was 10 feet tall, and I, you know, going on the street would have been too unsafe. So I had to make a huge detour to go where I was going, and that is also not sustainable. So I'm really, I have great dreams for this place, which I understand tonight is not the time to share with you. But I really hope that you will enable the building of something better than what there is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Yes, we have five members with their hands raised, Joel Schwartz and David Newton.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
There you are. Can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
You swear the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Name for the record?
My name is Joel Schwartz. I live on Armor Road. I've lived in Princeton for 41 years. I've worked as a developer and builder over the last 40 years in central New Jersey. I also have a design practice as an architect and a planner. My work has included redevelopment with lowercase r for 40 years and redevelopment with an uppercase capital R using the redevelopment statute for the last 20 years. Over the years, I've worked on parts of many New Jersey towns, which were very vibrant in the 40s, 50s, and 60s. But as those places have aged out of vibrancy for a variety of reasons, I've also worked on the redevelopment of those places. In the 40-plus years I've lived in Princeton, I've spent many, many enjoyable hours and days at the shopping center. My two daughters are 29 and 31. When they were growing up, the shopping center was, in many ways, an ideal place for young families like mine, as well as older people. It wasn't perfect, but it was wonderful in many ways. However, the shopping center is no longer the place that it was when my children were growing up. Between the changes in the larger marketplace, especially over the last 20 years, and the difficulty the shopping center has had in trying to adapt to the changing world and deal with the limitations of its design and construction, it's self-evident that the center needs help. In addition, the areas adjoining the center that are included in the redevelopment study are also in need of help for a variety of reasons. When I use the word help, I mean that the uses and the physical structure of these areas needs to be rethought, reconceptualized, and physically restructured. It may be helpful to put tonight's conversation to historical perspective, the way Leighton did. Probably not going to say it as well as Leighton did, but I'll try. 70 years ago, a redevelopment process began in and around the shopping center. That process produced the shopping center. Unfortunately, the design and construction strategy on which the center is based is inherently inflexible and not very adaptable. By contrast, a redevelopment process began in another part of Princeton 300 years ago, in the Central Business District. The template of the Central Business District is a much more adaptable. The template of the Central Business District is a much more adaptable one. That's why the downtown has been able to evolve over the course of three centuries incrementally, while the shopping center is kind of at a, at a cul-de-sac and needs the sort of help that can get, that can be provided by means of the redevelopment statute process. It doesn't necessarily follow that the shopping center needs to be made over to look like downtown, but it needs some tough love. I believe that the processes that are enabled by the redevelopment statute provide the appropriate tools to address the needs of the center and the surrounding areas in order to reconceive both and to make these a place that would be as beloved in the future as they have been for all of us in the past. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is David Newton and then Greg Robinson.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Newton, if you could raise your right hand.
Yeah.
You swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
If you could just give us your name for the record.
My name is David Newton. I am a 38-year resident of Princeton, New Jersey. And I've been involved in many aspects of this community, including completing the development and renovation of the building at the corner of Nassau and Witherspoon Street, which you know is the Lower Pine Building or Hamilton Jewelers. I've been involved in managing Palmer Square for 20 years. I've been involved in the redevelopment area in the center of West Windsor, which is an ongoing project. I live a stone's throw away from the shopping center. I lived there for 24 years in Governor's Lane. And all I can say is that everything that Leighton and Joel have said before me, I, I cannot embrace more. The shopping center back in the 1950s must have been a wonderful place, but today it's an anachronism and it needs to be changed. And I, I can't think of a particular design that's required for that change, but I have full confidence with Eden's being engaged in this process that they can come up with such a design. And if, which really talks to Mia and what she was saying earlier is that you have to talk to Eden's because you, you go down to their development in Fairfax, Virginia, which I think is called Mosaic. And it is an exquisite example of an urban retail development located in a suburban area. And, and I think that's really what you want. As far as the site, the comfort site that was sold recently or is in the process of being sold, I spoke to, I don't want to give away his name, but a well-known lawyer who's lives in the, in the area that we're talking about. He, he lives in the Little Brook area. And he was the first to say that this site has got no ecological, ecological value. And we have a unique opportunity here to create a mini downtown that would complement Palmer Square and so better service the residents of Princeton as well as the immediate area of the people who live there. And, and you know, Princeton always has a tough time. The 40-odd years I've lived here has had a very tough time embracing change. But I think this type of change has to be done. It has to be done quickly and the shopping center needs to be brought into the present era. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have three residents left. Greg Robinson and then Marina.
Hello, good evening.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your name for the record, please.
My name is Greg Robinson. I'm a resident on Clearview Avenue. And I've lived here for over 10 years, which seems like a newbie to a lot of the folks on this call me. But, but nonetheless, I wanted to come back to the issue of the, the two homes that are on Clearview Avenue that are potentially going to be included in this, in this initiative. Of all of the criteria, it seems that this H thing that is the smart growth one, it could literally include just about all Princeton, has been deemed kind of like the weakest of all of the criteria for inclusion. And then the only other rationale for including these two properties are that it would allow to plan comprehensively. And it seems like the only reason that that is even part of this is that the town happens to own those two homes. And they happen to be right next to the building on the corner of Harrison. And so I really find that that's, and it's, has the potential to really change the composition of the neighborhood. There's a lot that's going on in this neighborhood. There's a lot of development and talk of development that is happening in the shopping center. There's a lot of things that have already been approved around the shopping center area. And in addition, this, there's this big unknown now of the beginning of the street having some entirely different types of buildings, what we don't know. And we kind of feel like, and I feel like it's sort of, include this as a, a area of redevelopment. It just really opens the door to changing the whole neighborhood into not a neighborhood of modest residential homes, but something entirely different. And I, I don't see a really strong reason why the town has to encroach on that by doing that with this, by including those two homes at the end of the street.
So I just want to say, Greg, that ironically, the push to include those homes was based on the feedback from you and Megan and Martha and the other neighbors because we know that you had real concerns about potential massing of a site near to your home. And we are trying to think of the neighbor, the neighborhood in a broader, more organic way. And we wanted to open the possibilities for some of the more harmonious designs that you and your neighbors presented at some of the hearings that happened a while ago. And I, I don't think that we'd be able to, you know, meet anything near to what you presented. But we did feel, we did want to show that we had heard your concern about the design. And by including these, we felt that that opened up the potential for, it, it gave more design opportunities and more ability for us to work with your, with your neighborhood. But I would, I, I mean, just to echo what Carlos said, tonight is really just about designation. But when it comes to council, I, you know, I think we would, I can't, you know, speak for, for other members of the council, but I know that, I will say that one of the reasons why I personally pushed for it to be included was what I heard from you and the other neighbors. So I think it would weigh on us. We, we would take into consideration that you, you know, feel differently. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, yeah, I, I appreciate you saying that. Mia, I don't, I can't speak directly to what your motivations were. From my perspective, adding more uncertainty and more buildings doesn't necessarily address the, the idea of it being neighborhood. And it seems like adding another designation to two homes that could very easily be sold to somebody that could adapt those homes, modify them in a way that allows more families to move into this neighborhood, seems like a reasonable approach that doesn't require additional government intervention. And this seems like a, a solution that's in search of a problem by including these homes as a part of that designation.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, do we have one more person?
Actually, we have three.
Oh, you were supposed to cut them off.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but you know, you have to cut these lists off someplace. Otherwise.
So this will be the final three?
Yeah, well, it's, it's 10:16. So I guess if we complete it by 10:30, I'll cut it off by then. Is that okay? I don't think anyone else will raise their hand, but.
I, I would just say, if, if anyone else wants to speak, you need to raise your hand now. I, I, so now there's four.
Four.
You know, a, a, and I'm, I'm sorry that I just, I, I think it's important that we hear everybody who has a hand raised. I don't think we should hear anybody twice. I'm not seeing any more than the last person is Martha Davila.
Davila. Okay, so I have four individuals. And the next person, I believe, is Marina Rubina. So I will.
We were adhering to the three-minute rule?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been watching the clock, yeah.
Me too.
No, go ahead.
Marina, if, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could just give us your full name for the record?
Marina Rubina, 28 Corey Street.
Thank you.
I have a brief comment as it relates to the outdated layout and infrastructure from two points of view. One, as a parent with small children biking to the shopping center on multiple occasions, it is quite often not clear how to get to the shopping center itself, we found. And you're often in the traffic lanes, crossing, and extremely stressful with small children. So it, it seems that if there's a way to update the infrastructure to allow for a safe way for us to get to the actual shopping center from Harrison, that would be hugely helpful. And we do bike, we live in Witherspoon, Jackson, and we do see a lot of our neighbors biking over with laundry as confirmed by previous callers. And my second point of view is slightly different because I worked as an architect on one of the projects on a tenant improvement in the shopping center and found that my clients, who were the tenants, and they're still in business luckily, had an extremely difficult time, first of all, planning their space because of the through nature of the shopping center, because they have one facade effectively on the courtyard and one facade on Harrison. And because they're a very small tenant, it makes really long stretched out spaces, which are very difficult for small tenants to occupy. So we didn't have, we could only have one entrance for security purposes because a small business with one or two people and staff couldn't possibly man both sides. So that's a sort of an outdated layout that works for possibly larger places like McCaffrey's that could have multiple entrances. But for smaller service-oriented businesses, it's very, very difficult. And the other experience we had during this remodel, which made the remodeling way more expensive for my particular client, was the complete mess of all the piping, where some people's piping is in other people's tenant spaces. So you can't cut a pipe without turning off your water when the restaurant next door doesn't let you go in there or you don't even know that the shutter valve is in the next door space, which just makes everybody's life very difficult and stressful and working in sort of an outdated infrastructure environment, a very, very stressful situation for businesses who are just trying to open. So I think if we could find a way to have Eden's come to the table and work on resolving these issues from the sort of tenant perspective, but also from the biking visitor perspective, I think that would be super useful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three people. Veronica Olivares Weber and Noreya Diaz Tena.
Did you add another person?
I'm sorry.
Yes, you should be.
No, there, there's been no one, no one additional since we had the discussion right before Ms. Rubina.
He added another person.
If you could just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the whole truth? Enough, the, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I know.
If you could just give the, your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Veronica Olivares Weber and I'm a resident of Edward Place. I've been living in Princeton for 14 years. And I just want to share my experience with the shopping center. I have heard like all different kind of comments, but to be honest, in my experience, I have, you know, what I love about the shopping center, even though that, you know, it's all, and, you know, it does need, and in favor of the renovations and every, and redevelopment. But for me, it's very important, the courtyard, right? Because it has been, you know, these options for organizations like the Arts Council, the Princeton Public Library, to be able to host events, have movie nights and, you know, have been like, build, you know, community, put, put it together. And also they have, even though, you know, there is other things that we are worried about, you know, the, you know, obviously, it has been a problem with the businesses because of the high winds and everything. My experience with the dance, dance group has been very positive in terms like they have been very opening and welcoming organizations. I believe Charmin Mills is also using a, a space there. And they don't charge many organizations to be, you know, to, for, in order for them to be using their space. And that is something positive. So I, I believe, you know, that they're going to be doing a, a great job. And I just want to share my experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have Nuria Diaz Tena. And then Martha.
And you've cut off the list, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Hi, how are you? I swear to tell the truth. My name is Nuria Diaz Tena. I live in Clearview Avenue. And my main motivation to, to speak is to basically to agree with Megan and Greg about leaving the two houses in Clearview as residential, keeping the structure of the street as a residential neighborhood with so many changes, when we would like to have lots of changes and renovation in the Princeton Shopping Center that they really need the, not lots of work and modernize the place a little bit. And just one comment for the record, the bathroom is open. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And we had another one, Carrie?
Just one more person. Oh, am I still muted? Okay, one more person and that's Martha Davila.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Let me see if I can put my video. Hello, everybody.
If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could just give your name for the record, please.
So my name is Martha Davila. I live on 46 Clearview Avenue. I was actually not going to speak tonight because some of my concerns and questions, I think, would be better addressed when council meets on Tuesday. That's when I was planning on talking. But I do have some questions now that Mia mentioned that there was a reason to include the houses on Clearview and the corner building because that was going to give us more flexibility or give council more flexibility in the design of the area. My understanding from the ordinance that was approved for the affordable housing and Avalon slash Eden Development was that that was a very specific ordinance that would not really allow for many changes to occur. So I kind of want some clarification on this. If the whole area, including the houses on Clearview Avenue, are designated as an area in need of redevelopment, does that change how the development of the affordable, you know, the, the big development with Avalon, does it change how that gets developed? Or does, does it allow for public input and participation? And does it allow for council to overwrite what has already been put in that ordinance? And does it allow for council to overwrite what has already been put in that ordinance? I got somewhat confused by the comment that it will allow flexibility in the design that it was a response to the Clearview residents' concerns to that particular development.
Since I made the comment, I I'll answer you, Martha. I think the idea with redevelopment is that it gives flexibility for everybody who's involved in the process to particularly with regard to circulation and and design in terms of, I mean, the the legal, I mean, you're asking sort of a specific legal question. And and we don't have our regular attorney here, our affordable housing attorney here. So I feel like it's not a question we can ask the our redevelopment council. But we could, you know, have a more specific legal answer for you on Tuesday.
Okay. I I just feel like it's being put out there that these houses were included in in the study because it would give the flexibility and that it was a response to our concerns about the other development. So it gives.
Gives more space. It gives more space. How that space might be utilized, we don't know. We're at the beginning of the process, but it just gives more space overall for design flexibility. But but if, you know, it's seen that the neighbors have a very specific preference to keep those houses as, you know, in in the imprint and the way they are. And so I think that's something that council would take into consideration. But I again, I don't think it's something that I think it's something that we should talk about on Tuesday.
Okay, yeah, I think I would appreciate if that gets clarified on Tuesday because, you know, it gives the impression that the development from Avalon slash Eden can actually be modified by this designation. And my understanding was that it was quite specific, that it was not that flexible at all. So I think all the neighbors would like some clarification.
And just so that it's clear, that the board's role this evening, the planning board is only to make a recommendation to the governing body.
Yes.
The actual decision would be done by the by the governing.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Okay.
That's it. There's no one else.
Right. Let's close the public portion of the meeting and go back to deliberation by the board. I think that the question before us is whether or not we accept the designated area as shown on Mr. Rodriguez's plans. And you know, there are two ways that we can go. You could both heard arguments on both sides. But how would you like to settle this at this point? I think all of your council members ought to look at me and say, well, this is what what we're asking you to vote on. So.
I think it's the Frank, as the attorney, can you clarify for all of us what we're supposed to be voting on?
Sure, I I mean, I can suggest the motion for your consideration. It may be the best way to do this. But but obviously, I think, as as the chairwoman said, you know, it's a question of whether you believe that based on the testimony from Mr. Rodriguez, his report and other testimony you heard this evening, whether or not you believe that the study area qualifies as an area in need of redevelopment. And you will then make a recommendation to the governing body of such. I think what, you know, if if you want to consider this as a motion, you know, as a result of the public hearing this evening, the planning board recommends to the governing body that the properties identified as block 7401, lots 1.01, 1.01 C01, 1.02, 2 and 3, and block 7303, lots 1, 2 and 3, be determined as a non condemnation redevelopment area pursuant to the redevelopment law, based on the preliminary investigation undertaken by the board, including the report prepared by Mr. Rodriguez, a licensed professional planner, entitled preliminary investigation area in need of redevelopment, non condemnation for the properties dated March 10, 2021. And the testimony presented at the hearings by Mr. Rodriguez, as well as other testimony presented at the hearing, and that the board directs the secretary to send a letter to the governing body with this recommendation.
To facilitate board discussion, I would make such a motion.
There are seconds.
I'll second it. This is Louise.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Question.
You're on mute, Mr. David.
Yeah, sorry. Along with the subject designation CO1, which is the the PNC pad site. We didn't really hear any analysis from Mr. Rodriguez regarding that site. I you know, I don't feel when council recommended this as an area in need of redevelopment that we were envisioning including that site. And so I guess I'm asking the question as to whether it might be appropriate to exclude that one lot just because we haven't, I mean, it's a brand, it's sort of a brand new building. I I can't see it meeting many of the criteria. But I'd like to hear others.
It's it's not a separate lot.
Yeah, it's not.
It's a ground lease. It's a ground lease. The lot is the same as the rest, as the entire rest of the shopping center. So I don't think, and I defer to Frank, but I don't think we can separate the ground lease from from the rest of the property.
I would agree, it's probably not appropriate to do that. I think there's a separate designation for for tax purposes. But it is, it is part of of that entire lot. So I don't think it should be excluded.
And I would think that that would benefit the the leaseholder too, because it's so important to plan for circulation. Peace.
I'd like to second the motion.
I did that already.
Actually, I think you're thirding, I think you're thirding it, Councilwoman.
I thirded a motion.
Third, yeah.
If I could start the discussion just by acknowledging that there's there's a lot of love for the shopping center. I've been here 30 years and I actually spent some time working in the shopping center when the library was there temporarily. And I can attest to the to the testimony about the infrastructure that we heard from Ms. Rubina and from Mr. Rodriguez. And I, my, my child also ran on that lawn while there were Thursday night concerts. And and I, obviously, since I moved the motion, I think it is an area that's in need of redevelopment. I think some actions already happened there. Mr. Councilman Cohen made reference to the bank. That was an application that we heard. Nomad Pizza used to be a gas station. And so that certainly represents progress. And I I think this is the third or fourth redevelopment that we've heard while in my time on the board. And I I absolutely think that this area does meet the the specific criteria that were outlined in Mr. Rodriguez's report. And again, with, I think, the the most exciting thing about the redevelopment designation is that it does give the town some flexibility to negotiate outcomes that take into consideration multiple stakeholders. And I have confidence in this case where apparently the owner was reluctant to participate initially in that process, that we can have a good outcome. So I intend to vote yes.
Anyone else? Do we?
I guess.
Have a motion in a second, and so we're having further.
Yeah. I guess I'll make a just quick statement. I know it's getting late. I mean, I I do kind of share the same sentiment as Tim and others who have spoken in favor of, I guess, designating this property as an area in need of redevelopment. I think that the the shopping center is a place that is near and dear to a lot of people. I grew up right next to the shopping center. I have a lot of memories there, fond memories there, and I still go there very often. But I mean, I I think that I also had fond memories of the former Public Library and that changed. And I think that, you know, the the shopping center has reached a time or a period where, you know, it needs to change. I think that, you know, it's it's functionally obsolete, I think, or, you know, not obsolete, but it's it's not optimally used. I think that, you know, when we talked about, you know, 19 or 20% vacancy, that's just the buildings. But, you know, the space of the the site, you know, is vacant pretty much. The majority of it is vacant most of the time in terms of parking. I mean, you know, I would say probably even 50% of the site is vacant. And so I think that there's, there's much more you can do with that site. And I think that, you know, by designating it as an area of redevelopment, we are going to be able to have more flexibility in in kind of redesigning that and crafting it in a comprehensive way where, you know, people can have input and we can think about it as as a whole, instead of just kind of piecemeal, one site after another or one project after another. I also have to mention that actually it does say in our master plan in the new green building environmental sustainability element in the land use section, it specifically mentions the Princeton Shopping Center as the strat, as for a strategy to prepare plans and update zoning regulations in select areas to build mixed use, transit oriented and location efficient development. So I I think that this is definitely specifically in conformance with our master plan. So I I want to support the motion and to to make area designated as an area of redevelopment. So, yeah.
So we've, we've had a motion in a second and some discussion. Are you ready to vote on this? Or do you?
I am.
Okay, I was gonna say we could read the whole thing again.
Do you like me to do a roll call?
Yes, I think so, please.
Okay, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. 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 O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, thank you all. A lot of thought and work that's gone into that, really.
Yeah, a really good discussion, a lot of really insightful comments. But did you raise your hand, Mr. Chow? I thought I saw it.
Yes, it's my vote.
Oh. We're a little slow on some of these. Okay.
No, he's number 10. Can't call on him.
No, you can't. So anybody have anything else for this meeting or shall we close?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor of adjourning?
Bye.
Bye.
Close. All right, good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan.
Good meeting.
World's worst pillars.